I'd like to go ahead and welcome everybody to our work session tonight. And being asked to remind everybody, if you're talking, be sure and turn your microphone back on. They're having trouble getting some of the recordings and we're making comments before we turn our microphones on. So the public is interested in hearing what we have to say, so be sure and turn your microphone on. This time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Nocti.
Thank you, Mr. Francis Board. This is the time of year when we share with you our first view of what we think the local current expense budget should look like. We will have certainly another opportunity to look at it again in April. We do have our public hearing on the budget scheduled for the April board meeting. And so we'll do that. I am going to do some general introductory comments about budget assumptions. And then Leanna and I are just going to take turns going through the sections of the budget. And so we'll do that together. And as we've always done, just stop us or between sections or when you have a question. We'll answer your questions or tell you that we don't know, but we'll find the answer and get it to you. Following that, Dr. Putnam's going to help us right at the end about concerning one item that is not in the budget, but we expect will be. And it's some things that you all have looked at as a board throughout the year and talked about. And then Dr. Putnam will cover the proposed local capital budget. And Allison will give you her proposed child nutrition budget. Are we ready? So the first little sheet looks like this, just a half sheet of paper. Says budget assumptions at the top. Though you all have been on the board now sometime, almost all of you. And almost all of you have been on the board for some time, some, a little while and some quite some time. You always have to start the budget consideration with what do we think the revenues are going to be? And what do we think increases are going to be that we do not control? And then you look at your current budget and try to make assumptions so that you know what you're attempting to do in terms of spending down fund balance or building funds for a particular project or improving a particular area in the school system. So our budget assumptions in terms of increased cost are a 2% pay increase for all positions. That is, as you know, our best educated guess. That is highly contingent upon the state legislature and what they do with the budget for 2020 and 2021. And as you know, that can always be uncertain. And we still do not have a finalized state budget for the current fiscal year of 1920. But we are planning for 2% pay increase. It could be zero, it could be higher, we do not know. There's no way for us to know. We do know and have been told from the state to expect a retirement rate increase from just a little under 20%, if you can imagine that. 19.7% to a little over 20%. So that retirement rate continues to climb. We think it will continue to climb over time. There's nothing within our power that can change that, that's established for us by the state. And then hospitalization, another fixed cost when we have a full-time employee that in the current year cost us $6,306. And we have been told to expect $6,647 in matching benefit hospitalization cost. So those bottom two are givens, we can't do anything about those. And the 2% is our best get. So our assumption, budget assumption, is that we'll need an additional $448,383. In reality, we're not likely to spend all of that because not every employee will have hospitalization. But we have to budget for it because we know most of them will. So then under projected revenues, again, we're talking about local current expense, not state or federal. We did get what we thought was a very fair funding formula approved by the county board of commissioners. At their, not their last meeting, but the last meeting we attended recently. And what we did, we, just more for public consumption than anything else, we have a couple media representatives here. In the past, we took our increases over a three-year period and averaged those together. And so we would get like a 1.9% increase and then a 2.3 and then a 2.1. And you just continually averaged over a three-year period. And that really didn't make a lot of sense when students change pretty dramatically every year. And they go up and down and you were basically getting an average. And that may not reflect what happened in the last 12 to 18 months. And so we had a clear consensus between us and the commissioners just to give a flat per student increase. Students enrolled either at the end of the first month, the 20th day of school, or the end of the second month, the 40th day of school. That is very similar to what the state does with a lot of their allocations. And the county manager and the commissioners agreed to that. So the funding formula was 2.75% per student. Our overall amount will not go up that much every year automatically because the students will go, will, will have fewer students or more students. And for the current year, we're down a little over 100 students. So our overall amount will not be 2.75, even though it's 2.75 per student. It'll be closer to about 2%. And again, when you lose 100 students, that is a reasonable way to do that. So other, well, that's the projected revenue increases that we know about. Are there other questions about assumed increases and increases in revenue and increases in budget costs? Y'all have seen this for years, you're pretty familiar with it. Okay. So as we look at, the next sheet is, this sheet, it has every line item in the local current expense budget. And it has two, two columns that show the lowest possible or expected expenditure for that line item. And then if we have to use fund balance to cover some of that, that's in the first column. So the first column is if we have to use fund balance to cover some of those. And the second column, we just started doing a couple of years ago because that's what we want to shoot for. We want to get to that column where we're not putting fund balance into the budget in advance. This is exactly what it looked like last year. So what I'm going to do is go through the first section and then Leanna and I will take turns talking about one or two sections at a time, just stop us if you would. So the first section in local current expense is classroom teachers. Currently, we expect to have about 29.5 classroom teachers. That will cost us $996,855. If we, if depending upon benefit cost or pay raises or things that we may not know about, that could be as high as $1,053,000. Then the second, and we won't go through every line, you know, you'll hear me in a minute ago and you see the benefits there and, you know. So we'll generalize some of the things after we've covered them a couple of times. The second line is summer months of employment for head football coaches. The third line is summer months of employment for band directors. The next line is five of our 15 lead teachers. We typically take the more expensive lead teachers and we can legally categorize them in state funds. And so we do that to make the best use of local funds. We have local responsibility stipends. You all will remember, over the last year, we matched some of those stipends that's paid by Buncombe County so we would not lose people to them like we have in the past. You'll see that through here several times depending upon the category of employee that we're talking about. And we won't delineate these every time, but then you have social security, retirement and hospitalization costs. So that's the teacher section, any questions about that? All right, Leanna.
The next section is your central office administrative services. We begin with the purpose code of 6110 right there. That's our regular curriculum director and supervisor. We pay 1.3% of a salary out of that line item. And you can see that would be anywhere between $90,000 to $95,000 a year. That next line item, you can just, you can see assistant superintendent and the designated employer matching benefits for those positions. We move on down, 6201 encompasses our EC positions that we pick up out of local. We have to pick up some of the EC, we get federal dollars for that, but we have to do what's called maintenance of effort on several programs. We have to show that local is spending some money to help offset some of those costs. And then 6610 is your finance department. So that salary includes an assistant finance officer. 6810 moving on down is our media support. That, just we pick up 30% of a salary out of that and the associated benefits. Get down to 6910, those are your board of education expenses, that's budgeted. So that is conferences that we, that you guys go to and membership dues to the school board association.
Liability insurance, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's all associated with the board of ed. And then moving on down, we get into leadership of central office. The two line items there, that supplemental pay, those are the supplements for some administrator costs and their associated fees, matching benefits. 6940, it's just some central office expenses where we are currently like scanning our files, our student data files, mountain mediation, criminal records checks, you guys can read all that. So to sum that up, that category, we would spend anywhere from $956,000 to a little over $1,000,000 in central office administrative costs. Any questions?
The next, and we can go back if you all think about something and you want to ask about a section we've already covered later. We certainly go back, this is a, it's a work session and we just need to pause and talk about things. The next big section is non-instructional support. It has substitute teacher costs in it. You can see that's usually between $200,000 and $300,000. You have to think about, again, 500 or so licensed teachers, 180 school days typically. And when they're out, we're covering a lot of those costs. There's some benefit costs associated with that. The third line, 5403151, that's some school-based clerical employees. That is 29 clerical people who work throughout the schools. And then you have their benefit cost. If you go down to 6110, that's office support. You have 28 other office support positions. The next line is, I've got my lines crossed here. Excuse me, the 28 other office support is still under 5400. Then you go down to 6110, you have one and a half clerical positions at the central office. You have benefit cost. You have down at 6300, that is director and supervisor salary. That's 40% of CTE. We do use CTE funds to pay for that director, but that person also supervises migrant and ESL and manages social workers in a smaller district. They, they wear multiple hats and so you can't use strictly CTE money for that. We have benefit cost associated with that. If you look at 6400, that is the information technology bookkeeper, is Dever. So you have that salary there under 6400. And you have those benefit costs. You have telephone costs, that's our landline cost. And we are in a process of changing those over. We are pretty confident that's not going to cost us more, it could even cost us less. Then there's some additional telecommunications services. We have mobile communication cost. And, and we do, you'll see that again tied to different departments there, but that's really how we communicate. I just got off the phone with Mark Shepherd to talk about weather and we're talking on the cellphone. Then we have electricity, electrical service, natural gas, water and sewer, waste management, fuel for facilities, all of those things under 6530. It's a big section, any questions about those things before I go through the rest of them?
The electrical service. Am I looking at that right, 200, too?
Electrical's 1.4 million.
We're hoping, we're hoping that we're going to do the 1.190. So the, but the line on the right, you're saying that that's what you're hoping to meet, correct?
That's what we're planning for. If we have unusual weather next year and, and it's cold or even in the summer, if it's really hot and we're trying to have summer school and we're cooling buildings, there's a range on those costs. And we have unfortunately more buildings to heat and cool than we would like to have. We'll talk a little bit more about property acquisition in close session tonight and bring you up to date on those things. But that cost is in all likelihood going to be 1.4 million on the electricity, excuse me, 1.1 million on the electricity and it could be higher depending upon factors that we do not know.
That's why I'm saying, I mean, you're budgeting 200 and...
What we're doing is...
230,000 is what you're, I mean, you have a fluctuation there of 230,000.
What we're budgeting is the right column. And, and we've talked about that now for a couple of years and we did it the first time last year. We're budgeting that right column and we know that we'll need to spend some fund balance. But instead of putting in 1.4 upfront, we want to budget that right column and only spend fund balance where we have to and we'll come in less than the 1.4. For example, and I'll repeat this at the end, when we look at potential fund balance cost, last year, we budgeted about 1.4 for the current year. The current year is not over. We know that worst-case scenario out of that one point, we, we didn't budget, but we, we knew we could spend as much as in the left column, 1.4 out of fund balance. And the year's not over, we're not going to know until July or August what we actually spent. In talking to Angie and Leanna, we think our worst-case scenario is going to be eight instead of putting 1.4 in and it's sitting there and it looks like you have money to spend. We're looking at the right column and it's coming in less. And then over, I think after about three or four years, we'll really know about what we're going to spend. And then we can reduce our budget by that much or we can find other revenues or whatever we need to do. And I'll repeat that at the end when we look at the, the most fund balance that we could spend for 2021 and what we think that might be. But I think that will be less than eight and we'll just have to see. We really won't, excuse me, we really won't know until we do all our payables out and we get into like August.
Are we still paying a set amount on cell phones or?
I think it's 36 a month.
Is that across the board or is that just, is it more for certain?
It's a flat rate. It's, it's, the AP gets what I get. Yeah. We did adjust that a couple of years ago. Yeah, that's a good question. It's, and we can look it up, it may be 30.
That sounds correct.
Leanna, will you look that up for us and we'll, and remember, we'll text everyone. It's lower.
Okay.
But it is, it is for assistant principals and principals and directors and myself, it's the same rate across the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's 30 a month?
360, yeah. Jason looked it up, so that's 30 a month.
30 a month, okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah. All right. Other questions on that section? When we get in big ones like this, we'll try to stop in the middle. Okay, so that was 6530. If you look at 6540, that's custodial across the district. You'll look at some summer months of employment that we do there, mainly extra mowing and, and when we have to move, we have to move equipment around and things like that. The third line is 17 custodians. And we think that's going to be around $300,000. Could be a little higher if we have some unexpected costs. You don't know who you're going to hire in the middle of the year and how many years of experience they might have. And then some overtime, we've really tried to reduce that, not only here, but in other departments there and give comp time as much as we can. And we ask people to, to use comp time up prior to June 30 of each year. So we have a little comp time money and then we have all of those associated benefit costs. We have some contracted services for waste disposal. We have equipment repairs. Again, there's some cellphone costs for, for some of those folks because some of those folks have, have to be on call. Custodial supplies, utility supplies, repair parts. Purchasing, purchase of custodial equipment, that's 6540. Any questions about 6540? Okay, 6550 is transportation. That is a big proportion of the transportation director's salary. Can't do all of it out of, out of this because there are some things that he does that's not direct, not all connected to this job. But that's 80% of the director's salary. There's the responsibility supplement that's equivalent to elementary principal benefit cost. When you get to 5680, that is maintenance. Again, you have the director cost and the clerical cost, the first two lines. The big line, which is 568003175, that is all of our skilled trade folks in the maintenance department. 23.6 of those folks, that's electricians and plumbers and carpenters and all the folks in that department. That's 753,000, could be a little bit more, but we wouldn't expect it to be a whole lot more. Responsibility stipend, benefits associated with those costs. And then other costs that go along with maintenance, elevator repair, HVAC, water and sewer parts, boiler inspection fees, fire prevention costs, fire and intercom costs, contracted permits, rentals and leases, travel, some expense associated with licensure for some of the employees, vehicle liability, office supplies, pest control, uniforms. Yeah, I won't read the whole list to you, you see some other stuff there. We actually, I don't think it's reflected on your sheet. We had some child nutrition repair cost in there and we still may need to do some of that from time to time out of maintenance, but we actually moved that into one of the regular maintenance lines. We didn't, I didn't feel like it was necessary to have two lines that do essentially the same thing. So we just put it in one location. Any questions about 5680? You see it, tires, plumbing, diesel, all that stuff. Okay, 6610 is office support. That's three central office clerical people, that very first line. Then we have additional responsibility stipend that is maybe Leanna and who's the other person?
Nathan.
And Nathan in bookkeeping.
It's our finance, 6610.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's right, thank you. That's why she's here, to keep me straight. 6610 is the finance department. And then again, over time, we have really worked, you all remember 10 years ago when we had a good bit, we have really worked. Dr. Garrett gives lots of credit for working on that well before I became superintendent in moving those costs down. And whenever possible, compensating the person through comp time or comp pay. And they can build that and then as long as it's expended through the end of June, saves us some dollars. And then you have benefit cost workshop, equipment cost, travel, there's a fidelity bond. Our, our, our finance officers bonded, has been for some time. Supplies and materials, computer software, those kinds of things. Anything else on 6610? 6621, that's human resources. The first line's two and a half clerical. Then we have benefit costs and, I mean, that's a pretty small section right there. Jason's included up with the central office numbers. That was 6621. 6610 is ITC. And so we have one IT specialist, not one of your regular techs, that's Price. And then additional responsibility stipend for Kim. She'll probably be earning some of that in the morning, about 3:30 when I call her and tell her that we're going to do something or not, those kinds of things. And then we have benefit costs associated with that department. And then any questions about that? Am I going too slow or am I good? Faster, Mr. Uh, Mr. Kirkpatrick says. Uh, sixty-nine forty, I think that's, uh, superintendent's cost, um, sixty-nine forty. So that, uh, the office rather, the first line of one thirty-seven, one thirty-seven, uh, uh, between one thirty-seven and ninety-eight, that's four clerical people. Uh, the next line is one custodian and then we have benefit cost associated with those, a hospitalization, and we have a volunteer accident insurance policy, uh, for the system. And then, uh, seventy-two hundred child nutrition, that is in local current expense. Uh, almost all of child nutrition is in the child nutrition budget. But, uh, we have, uh, a responsibility stipend and some benefit cost and, um, some, um, child nutrition, repair parts, materials and labor in that section. Any questions about non-instructional support?
Okay, your next section is school building administration, so that encompasses your principals and assistant principals, um, and related costs there in some of the schools. So that first line, fifty-four hundred, most of that encompasses principal and AP. You've got staff development in there, copier ca- costs for the school, um, some travel reimbursements, and those are just split out in small increments and divided up in between elementary school, middle school, high school. Um, moving on to mobile communication costs for the principal and assistant principal. You've got membership dues there, which, um, advanced ed. Dr. Nolte, did you want to say something?
Yeah, one of the things I've asked Mrs. Barker to do, um, is to take a look at that. We have talked about that off and on as a board, um, and you've talked with me about it, uh, through the years. And we are with advanced ed, we think they have served us well, but we will do, um, some serious training next year and give strong consideration to go into state accreditation. Okay? Uh, newspapers don't write too much about that because we don't want the advanced ed folks to be upset and, um, not wanna accredit us before we have new accreditation in place. But we will, uh, we will certainly, um, uh, strongly consider that in 2021 and we'll bring you updates on that.
And then moving on down through there, we've got some graduation expense, um, and then moving to fifty-four ten, that encompasses your additional responsibility stipends for your, um, principals and assistant principals and the employee-related, um, benefits for that. Fifty-four twenty is your code for APs, assistant principals, and their associated costs for salary and hospitalization. We've got fifty-five hundred.
Can you back?
Yes, sir.
Can you back up to, um, the fifty-four ten?
Mm-hmm.
Additional responsibility stipend?
Yes.
Hundred nine thousand, is that for the elementary, what did you say?
That would be, um, fifty-four ten would be, have your principals in there, all of your principals.
So this, so that's the, all the principal, the APs and principals?
Yes. That, no, that is, that will be your principals. Down here on fifty-four twenty, you've got assistant principals.
Okay, so this is principals.
Fifty-four ten will be principals, fifty-four twenty will be your APs.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, let's see, fifty-four twenty is your assistant principals and their, um, associated costs for, uh, matching benefits. Fifty-five hundred comes into some travel reimbursements for athletics. Both of those lines are, um, goes to athletic equipment or travel for athletics. Um, the sixty-one ten, that goes back to some central office administrators. That's like your, um, your additional responsibility stipend there is for your federal programs director, your high school supervisor and your curriculum supervisor there. And then their associated costs. Flipping on, oh, well, not your guys, but my page. Fifty-three twenty is social workers and their associated cost. We pay thirty-five percent of a position for a social worker out of local funds. And again, that's, um, that maintenance of effort we have to show. Fifty-eight ten moves on down to media, so that would be, we pay two positions there and some substitute fees when they are out, associated benefits. Fifty-eight thirty is your guidance services, so we pay for one guidance counselor out of that and associated, um, benefits. Some supplies and materials for the schools for guidance-related materials. Fifty-eight forty is health. So most of that, the contracted services is, um, with the health department, with our school nurses that we pay. And then sixty-eight ten is, um, once again encompasses some media. That is seventy percent of, um, could I get that Ms. Jackson's salary there is out of sixty-eight ten for media. That totals our instructional support and that would come in anywhere right around two ninety, two hundred ninety-eight thousand to three hundred and ninety, depending on who's in positions there. Our next section is co- non-contributory employment benefits. That is, um, longevity bonus leave mentor pay. Those are some, um, extra pay, you know, that we have to pay our, our employees, um, those non-contributory benefits.
Okay, my turn?
Your turn, sir.
Okay. Um, fifty-one twenty is, uh, career technical education, uh, contracts, repairs, supplies, materials, um, the, uh, due, uh, again, uh, the duty stipend, um, for that position and benefit cost. Uh, fifty-one ten is career technical support, computer equipment. Um, uh, fifty-one, uh, ten is, uh, um, fifty, excuse me. Fifty-one ten is, um, computer equipment and, uh, teacher assistance, all right? So if you look at the second fifty-one ten line, that's, uh, three teacher assistants that we have there and, uh, their benefit cost. Uh, fifty, fifty-two ten, supplies and materials for, uh, special needs program, uh, in local funds. Um, fifty-two sixty is AIG. We have the AIG jumper, uh, excuse me, AIG summer camp tutor and some benefit costs, some AIG field trip funds and supplies and materials. Um, eighty-one hundred is our big transfer to charter schools. We anticipate that'll be around eight hundred thousand, uh, and you all know that story, you've heard that before. Um, then we have, um, fifty-two seventy is, um, ESL or, excuse me, eh, eh, limited English proficiency. We have seven-tenths of a teacher, uh, in that position for ES to assist with ESL students and the benefit cost. Um, and then we have, um, um, sixty-five fifty is, um, workshop and allowable expenses. Um, is that related to, is that related to transportation?
That is transportation.
Thank you. Um, allowable, uh, supplies and materials and, uh, repair costs for transportation. One of the things that goes on here is a good number of the repairs that we do in transportation are, are paid by the state, especially for yellow buses. But if we're working on a car that we own or something that we own, then we have to provide, uh, the funding for that.
Is this also the activity bus, the white buses as well?
Yeah, okay. To my knowledge, yes. Um, and then, uh, under, um, then we have, uh, students at risk, um, funds, uh, local funds, uh, supplies and materials. Uh, seventy-two hundred is, uh, you remember Dr. Garrett set this up? It actually works pretty well. We allocate a dollar per, uh, free and reduced lunch student to each school and that gives them some incentive to collect funds when people don't pay. And if they, uh, if they, it's a pretty small cost for the whole district, a little thirty-six hundred dollars. And then if, uh, if they don't collect the cost, then we ask the school to pay, but we give them a little cushion there. So it's a pretty good incentive program. Um, fifty-three ten, supplies and materials, again, for at-risk students. Uh, middle school remediation, you know, uh, fifty-three thirty. You all know that most of the remediation funds for elementary is federal money, federal Title I, which is PRC fifty. This is PRC oh seventy-two, which is, uh, middle school remediation. You'll see a high school remediation in just a little bit. And then the next section there of fifty-two ten, that's essentially ROTC. Uh, they give us funds, uh, from, um, the state that I think comes from the military organizations, but it's not enough to cover all of those costs. Um, so those are our, uh, matching associated costs for ROTC and benefits. Uh, the next section is ineligible transportation. This, these are some more local transportation costs are related to, um, you know, driving and benefit cost, um, liability insurance, uh, repairs and materials, fuel, tires, um, those kinds of things that are not eligible to spend under state. The next, uh, little section, you let me know if I run into your sections.
Okay.
I think I just did one of your sections.
Okay.
That's not fair. Uh, the next little section is there, uh, there is, uh, fifty-eight fifty. That's, uh, security guards and some drug screening and our alert now rapid notification, uh, cost. Yeah, would you get a couple of them?
Okay, so the next fifty-five fifty is your athletic coaching supplements, um, and their related fees for matching benefits.
Let, let me just say there, that's the one that you all as a board ask us to look lot, look at. And Dr. Putnam's gonna tell you a little bit about what the committee recommends, so that one could change before April if you all want it to change.
The next section, other curricular supplements, that encompasses your band and chorus supplements for those, um, programs. And then you have high school remediation. Um, you saw middle school remediation a little bit earlier. The next section with fifty-one ten is system instructional support. So that is just broken out in smaller increments, supplies and materials that, um, get a little bit of an allotment for cultural arts, summer school, PE, AIG, elementary, high school. All that's just broken out, band, teacher of the year. Um, and then we've got the bottom of that is the large band instrument equipment and the piano and equipment for chorus.
Any questions? Uh, next section is, uh, techno- the technology support. We have a, um, the, the first big line is there is seven, uh, information technology technicians. So that's the first big line there. We have their associated benefit costs and contracted services, travel, uh, their mobile communications, membership fees. I won't read all of those. That's sixty-four hundred. When we get down to sixty-seven ten, that's testing and accountability, all the testing and accountability that we do. Um, the, uh, first, uh, big line in there is sixty-five percent of the, um, uh, Ms. Cook's, uh, salary and associated benefits. She, again, small district does other things for us, uh, benefit cost associated with that. Um, contracted services, supplies and materials, travel. When we get down to sixty-eight ten, that's library, media, uh, some workshop expenses and supplies and materials, uh, library books, uh, computer software related to, um, library services and purchase of equipment.
The next section is, um, curriculum development. So that's workshop expenses, um, and then supplies and materials for your elementary school print, printing and middle and high school. That's like for, uh, to print benchmarks, report cards and that kind of supplies and materials.
The next section, fifty-three ten, uh, that's in-school suspension. Uh, we have the first, uh, big line is, um, four, uh, TAs. We do have a little bit of a, uh, uh, decrease in, in some of the costs or expected costs because, uh, we have people in there who don't cost as much as previous employees. So there's a, a, a small tick down there. Um, uh, those people have some subs. Uh, again, the overtime's, uh, number's pretty low, we're trying to stay away from that. And then we have benefit cost and, um, some contracted services. The contracted services mainly relate to threat assessments, uh, that we do on students, that last line in that section. Uh, then we have, uh, the employee supplement, that's the big number. Most of that gets paid out. That's our big, uh, end of March payment for most, most folks. Um, and then the benefit cost associated with that. And then, uh, seventy-one hundred, um, that's, uh, public relations. You can see that's a pretty small budget for, uh, um, a district our size and we do get some help from the foundation, uh, and what they do there, but we just have some, um, workshop, travel. We do a little advertising, things like, uh, you know, congratulation graduates, uh, have a happy holidays, uh, some of those things. A little bit of printing, um, I think the membership dues is the local chamber, uh, in that section and then just some supplies and materials.
Uh, the next section is, um, human resource services, membership and dues for their associated, um, memberships that they, uh, they attend. Supplies and materials, those are split out between employee of the year recognition, um, and then the year-end recognition. We wanted to see that differently, that, the cost for those. And then school resource officer is our next, um, section, fifty-eight fifty. That contracted services is for our SROs and some of their related expenses with vehicle insurance and repairs and gas that we have to pay for our SROs. Our next section is rental and leases, which mainly encompasses the Pisgah High School baseball field, um, on that. And then our last item is unbudgeted funds for those unexpected needs that we might have come up that we need to, some money.
And then, at the very end, you see the far right column is our anticipated revenues and our anticipated expenses, those match. Uh, we hope in a few years that we, you know, we won't need the column to the left of it as we've done this, uh, you know, a while, uh, we'll be able to, to get down to an actualized budget. Uh, we, we do know that we have the potential of spending about one point five out of fund balance. We know last year we spent around six. This year it's going to be eight or less, I think, less. And, uh, and then even with that big number, we'll, we'll probably, we may spend half of it, we may spend less than that. It depends on a lot of factors that we do not know, but I think if we can do this actualized budget of, uh, what we're budgeted and then see what, what we spend over that for a few years, we'll, we'll have a really good idea, uh, of what it's gonna be in most years and then we can just cut the budget back to that, uh, or seek other revenues. So the only other thing that I wanted to talk about, unless you all have questions with the current expense budget, and this is the longest part of the budget, is for Dr. Putnam to talk a little bit about the work that was done by the committee that you all asked us to put together, uh, for, to take a look at coaching supplements. Um, so he has that. So he has that. And I'll turn it over to him at this time. And Dr. Putnam, just for recording purposes, you may want to come back to your mic. That'll make it easier for IT to get a good recording here in a second.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you have before you. Back sometime, we were compelled to take a look at the, the coaching, the current coaching supplements and what we pay. And I've also, it was also the sentiment of the board, and if, if I misspeak, feel free to correct me, to have as many employees, employee coaches as, as possible to incentivize this supplemental pay for coaching as much as possible to compel employees to become coaches as well. And so with that in mind, we formed a committee. And Mr. Francis served on that committee. Mr. Jim Harley Francis served on that committee, as well as all the secondary principals and all the secondary athletic directors. And from that, there were three big takeaways. Number one was to, and this was actually advocated for on the bar, high school athletic directors. Number one, to correct the middle school athletic director pay. It was vastly, they felt like vastly underpaid position. In the handout that I provided you, we actually, this is proposed. This is for your consideration, for you to take a look at. We actually corrected the athletic director supplement for a middle school athletic director. They were being paid twelve-seventy-five, again, depending on how many years they had been, been in education. And that in comparison to our high school athletic directors, who were ranging twenty-four to twenty-six-hundred in supplemental pay. So what we needed to do, based on the committee findings, was to acknowledge the work that occurs in the summer on the part of those middle school athletic directors, while still making it enticing and equal and fair for our high school athletic directors. So let me start with our high school athletic directors. Their total compensation includes an additional month of employment plus a tw, a supplement that's between twenty-four. One of our athletic directors makes twenty-four-hundred at the high school and the other makes twenty-six-hundred. And that's again, just based on years of experience. So what we did was adjust the middle school supplement to reflect that. And so we ended up with middle school athletic directors that will again fall within that range on supplement only. The offset and the advantage to being a high school athletic director is the additional month of employment, which our middle school athletic directors do not receive. And we felt like that was a fair reflection of the additional responsibilities that a middle school athletic director has, while not surpassing in compensation all of the athletic duties that a high school athletic director would have. And if you do the math, it's, it's roughly, we, we've, in, in taking their supplement from twelve-hundred to approximately twenty-four to twenty-six-hundred, that's a half month's pay. And we're basically saying, we know that you send off helmets and shoulder pads for reconditioning and you receive those back in and inventory those in the summer months. We acknowledge the concussion meetings that you hold and are required before beginning the football season. We acknowledge the winter sports equipment that you have to order in the summer so that it arrives in time prior to any winter sport. In my opinion, is a good reflection of what a, a middle school athletic director does. And it's just compensation for the work that they put in. It also does not surpass the work of the high school athletic director because the high school athletic director receives a, and then a whole nother month of employment as they should. They are scheduling camps and they are looking after the weight room and they are checking on facilities and overseeing many of the capital improvements that occur in the summer at our high schools. So in consideration of the workloads and responsibilities, we felt like this is as close as you could come to having it balanced up. And I do want to say this because I just think it's a really good reflection of our two high school athletic directors. They both stayed after the meeting and said, we don't care if you fix any of it, but please fix this for the middle school athletic directors. This, they are grossly underpaid for what they do. Our middle school athletic directors, of course, lobbied for their coaches. All right, so that is corrected in this big spreadsheet. So then it gets into a model of how do we entice our, our teachers, our employees to become coaches? How do we incentivize that? And I want to give credit at this time to Jason Hines. I asked him, can you research and check to see what other counties are doing? How can we create a model that incentivizes our employees to also become coaches? And so at this time, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Hines.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Board members, the, in talking with other districts and how they pay their coaches, the base coaching supplement, if you look, let's see, it'd be seven columns over, coaching supplement at the top. That base coaching supplement was very competitive in talking to other districts around us. One of the things that, that seemed to be an issue was that hadn't been changed in a long time. And if we wanted to change that, how would we come up with a system that rewarded current employees or future employees to take on coaching positions in addition to their teaching or other duties? And give them a slight increase each time they get, you know, a little more experience without having to go back and revisit that and without having wide gaps. Right now, once you get thirteen years of experience, thirteen-plus, you're just done as far as any future pay raises for coaching. So that was one of the things Mr. Francis had pointed out. And so in looking at it, we thought that a blended system would work best. So as you look at the chart that, that you've been given, each employee, if you just take the first one there, facilities manager, athletic director, that's the same person or would be the same person there. In this example, the base coaching supplement for the facility manager is twelve-seventy-eight and as athletic director is twenty-six-hundred. In the next column, you will see what they are paid as a teacher. That is state funds that they are paid for their teaching duties. And that's the gross pay. And so what we felt like would be a good proposal is to take one percent of that teacher pay to increase their supplement. And so in that next column, you see it's a one percent of teacher pay. So for this person, it would be five hundred dollars for each position. One for facility manager and one for athletic director. And so that's what that person would get. They would get the coaching supplement in the first column over there. And then one percent of teacher pay, five hundred dollars added to it. So essentially that person would get seventeen-seventy-eight for that first position and then thirty-one-hundred for the second. Now, the, the rest of the columns to the right, you know, is the tax, FICA, the retirement. That's cost to the district. So the total cost, the, the yellow one, at the, the yellow column, total cost of benefits of one percent increase, that is taking the one percent, the five hundred dollars, adding the tax and the retirement. And that's the total cost of that one percent. So then if you look at the green, grand total supplement plus one percent increase, that is what they get from coaching and the, the base supplement and then the one percent and the taxes and the retirement. So that's the total cost of that per position. That's not what the person will get. That's what the total cost to the district is, including the FICA and the retirement. So if you want to know what the coach would get, you take that base supplement column and add the one percent column to it. And that's what they would get gross pay before taxes. Now, the advantage to this is that each time that that person goes up a step in teacher pay or each time the state gives a pay raise on the teacher side, they would get a little bump on the coaching side too. And that would just be automatic. It wouldn't have to be anything you'd have to revisit or we would revisit with you. If you approved this plan, then each time that happened, finance would simply re-figure the one percent. And that's what they would get for the next contract. So it's, it's a way of, of giving them slight incremental increases to reward more experience. But the base coaching supplement remains the same.
Think it's important to point out that this is for head coaches only. Okay?
Correct.
This is for head coaches only. And currently what we pay, if we change nothing for this past year, as is, we paid eighty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars last year for head coaches. If we implement this plan using the same coaches with the same years of experience and incentivizing by one percent for head coaches, that would increase that amount by twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, seventy dollars and thirty-five cents. So we would have went, if y'all were to adopt this or decide it's something you want to do, we would go from having paid eighty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars in supplement to head coaches to one-hundred-and-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-five cents. So that's a twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-five cent increase. Y'all have any questions about that? And I'll move to the third thing that the group discussed.
Any questions? I, I would just say procedurally, we, we want to give this to you, let you think about it. Obviously, this is not an action night. But what we would plan to do without objection is to hand that to finance on Monday. And they could talk about it and decide whether or not they brought that to the board. We'd need some kind of action on it as we would for any, any change in salary. So this is informational, but procedurally, we, we would send that to finance on Monday and then finance could do as they saw fit with it, fit with it. And then if they saw fit, they could bring it to the board.
Mighty of Jake. I'd say we refer it back to the finance committee.
So the third and final thing that come out of the group was to look at the allotment of assistant coaches and head coaches per sport. And we are looking at that right now. That, that is a, we want to be careful there, make sure there are no imbalances to make sure there's Title IX compliance. And so we also didn't want to muddy the water with this. We, you know, they're really two separate things. You either like this or you don't. You want to move forward with this or you don't. And then go back in maybe in August or ahead of August and look at allotments by position. But it wouldn't impact because this is for head coaches only and it's an adjustment for the athletic director. And then it becomes a question of how many positions do we pay for per sport? So they're really kind of two separate things. But that's the third, I just didn't want to leave that like we hadn't discussed it. That was the third topic of the group and that's something we're continuing to look at. And I can bring back to you a proposed allotment or spreadsheet on that at a later time.
Yeah, we talked about, we, we had an old model. I remember back when I was a principal at Waynesville Middle for sports like track and cross-country and you had a head coach. And then when you reached a certain number of athletes in track and cross-country, you added an assistant. And so we know that we want to go back and see if we can find that language and then look again at sports and see which ones it might apply to and then bring that to you.
Currently, don't we have allotted numbers that we actually are paying for every, I mean, like a dollar?
And then if they want more.
If they want more, it goes on the school has to pay it, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. We've had some questions about cross-country and track. We need to go back and look at that language and see if we're still adding. We've had, we've had some questions too about the number of wrestlers we're starting to keep at some locations. And even cheerleading, you all remember, you know, when I was a young boy, you might have ten or twelve. And now we seem to have a lot. So we want supervision for all of those areas. And we just didn't feel like we could bring you a sound recommendation tonight. Wanted to look at that again, bring it back to you after we thought about it a little bit longer.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is, there's a lot of sports that are not cutting players like they used to. So because they're not doing that, you've got more kids, which is great, but there's also a lot more responsibility for these coaches, which they need some help. And I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, we started looking at this.
Yeah, we, we have a pretty big golf number, believe it or not, at Bethel Middle right now. More than you would typically think that you would have for golf at a small middle school. So we want to make sure that, we don't want to waste a penny, right? But we do want to make sure they have supervision. And so we, we just want to study that a little bit longer before we, before we give you something.
Does this put us in a better competitive position with surrounding counties?
Absolutely. And again, I want to give credit where credit is due. Mr. Hines done all of the, the research on this. He reached out to other HR directors from around the region. This is pretty near to the exact model Henderson County is using. And this is, you know, something that they have been using for some time, so.
The difference between this model and the one Henderson uses is theirs is solely based on a percentage of the teacher's salary. So they don't have that base catching supplement at all. You just get four percent of your teacher's salary or three percent or whatever they agree on. And theirs was broken down by different sports. So football got a higher percentage, basketball got a little higher. The non-revenue sports were lower. So there, they had a, a percentage ranking based on the revenue sports and how big the sports were. And it was a percentage of the teaching salary. We couldn't do something like that and, and, you know, that, that was an extremely complicated process. So the, sort of the compromise was to blend those two and have that base pay, which, which people were fairly satisfied with and add the one percent to it, which gave them a good. And then they still get some increases as they go up in teacher pay, so.
We'll tell you in researching the, whether to add assistants or not or have more head coaches or not, we reached out to all the athletic directors. Everyone in, in the committee that was at a school, which was all the secondary principals and all the secondary athletic directors. And we showed them our current allotment by sport and we received little, well, we received no feedback. So as far as adjustments, they felt were needed. That said, just looking at it on our own, we still think there's things that we need to adjust or correct. And once we have a full list of those, I'll bring them to you. You can. You can look or consider them just as you are tonight and say, yes, go forward, or no, fix this, or no, take it all off the table, let's stay as is, so. Any other questions about athletics?
Yes, I've got a couple. Trying to count. So these are the high schools. This is not the middle school. This is just high school.
That's all head coaches.
At the high school, or at the middle school lawsuit.
It's right, yeah.
Well, I'm sort of, let's see. So like you're cheering, it looks like you've got, why does under the teacher pay yearly gross? So I'm assuming like it's one under cheerleading, they're not, they're not a teacher. That's how that column reads, right?
Yes, this would only incentivize those coaches, head coaches, that are current employees.
Right, okay.
There is, there is one or two that are community members or whatever, and that, you'll notice there's just dashes across there instead of a number.
Well, let's see, I'm still...
So basically...
Well, softball's still my thing. You're saying between 1, 2, 3? I only see two softball head coaches, and I know that we have, Waynesville Middle is not, Waynesville Middle is not a, a teacher, is not a school employee. So why are there only two softballs if you're going, have we missed something here? Because there are only two softball head coaches on here, and I know we have three middle schools and two high schools.
They dropped down to the non-employee list, unless we missed them.
Well, no, 1, 2, 3. I know that there are three schooling...
Five in total.
Five in total, but there are only two head coach softballs on this list, and I know three of them are employees.
We may have just missed them.
Well, yeah, so let's double check your figures before you even bring anything to finance, I think. Make sure that you've got all the head coaches which are employees of the school system on this list, if we're doing middle school and high school.
Okay. Certainly do that. We'll double check it.
Yeah, because, I mean, I was just looking, I mean, I was just seeing the cheer, but there are only two softball head coaches on here unless I've just looked through here too fast.
Yeah.
And there's only one golf coach on there, or I know we've got more than one golf team, it looks like.
So let's make sure that you have all the coaches that are teachers on this list before we start giving anybody anything, because you might leave somebody out, and then we'll have to come back and do it again.
Right. And we may...
It would change the numbers. Yeah, it would change the numbers, so.
Yeah, when we redacted the names, simply because, you know, we didn't know who all would be looking over this spreadsheet, it's possible that we dropped some out that...
Right, because like I said, I know you've got 1, 2, 3. Looks like you've got four head coaches on here, 4, 5, 6, 6 head coaches, 7 head coaches that are not employees, which you've got some of the non-employees on here. We can see them, but like I said, I know we've got three softball coaches that are head coaches, and we've got five positions. So there are either one missed, two missing, or something.
Okay.
Let's just double check that you've got all of them in the...
We'll certainly do that. It's easier with the names in.
Right.
Because then we can go and see.
Because, you know, we just don't want to leave somebody out and then need to come back three months later. Well, you didn't give me the thing, and I'm a school employee.
Right.
Yeah, the, it would change the total numbers, obviously, and we need to make sure that's totally correct. If you approve the plan, though, it's just the 1% for anybody that's coaching, so you wouldn't be doing it by individual.
All these must...
You would just be approving the plan, so then anybody that did a contract that is a current employee would get the 1%. But you wouldn't necessarily be doing it by individual.
Well, yeah, but I'd still like to see the total amount...
Sure, absolutely.
Right at the beginning, and then we'll know instead of actually pass it, then somebody comes back to one of y'uns and say, I didn't get my 1% this first go around.
Sure.
I don't have a place to have a comment, a couple of comments. Number one, I am glad that you're doing this, and that we're going to be competitive with everybody around. And number two, for the dedication, hours of service, for the service, for the hours it takes to do this, it's the right thing to do.
Other questions about athletic supplements? Before Trevor gives you capital, proposed capital, I want to refer you to this sheet, which are the personnel requests that were not included in current expense budget. I want to just talk to you about those briefly, because those did come in, so you know what was not funded. We asked, we had a request for a half an ESL teacher position, we had a part-time clerical, two lead teacher months of employment, we had three EC requests related to teachers or assistants, and those were requests, but those need to come out of the EC budget. So that's one of the reasons those did not go in. Had a school counselor, and then we had a social worker therapist that we did not put into the local budget. The EC positions may or may not be funded out of the EC budget. I think that Brandy has to look at that. Constantly remind principals and directors, we're down, again, over 100 students, so adding positions is not as logical as it was in the past. The social worker position, I've said this a time or two to small board committees, but we're in a situation where there's more availability for us to bill for services. EC already bills for things like OT and PT and some psychological testing and things like that. We are confident that if we hire an appropriately licensed social worker with the right licensure in place, that that person can actually bill for some of the therapeutic services that we currently contract for over time. I don't think we'll put that in the local current expense budget, but we did have a position drop from the state in November. And we had, you know, two holidays, and for me, some family stuff and a little surgery, and we had been debating what we do with that position. And probably tomorrow or Monday, we will advertise for a licensed clinical social worker. That person could essentially, over time, pay for themselves and others, and we'll put that in the state budget. So those are the things that are not in there. What I said to the collaborative leadership team that meets with me periodically is that if we get to August and we've only spent 300,000 or 400,000 out of fund balance, we would need to go back and look at some of these and reconsider them. If we spend, you know, six or more, probably not. But I wanted you to have those, so you would know everything that we considered, and because you might get questions about those. Any questions about those before we look at capital?
My personal request, let's see, lead, you know, my personal request, the lead teacher at Pisgah High School, is Tuscaloosa not asking for one, or they are going?
They want an extra month of employment for the ones that they have.
And Tuscaloosa's not asking for this?
Both of them are asking for it. It's, they're not side by side on the list, I'm sorry.
Both on there.
I typed the, yeah, I typed these in as they were on the forms, not, I didn't match them up on the list. They're both there.
So why are they asking for the lead teacher to have a extra month when we have assistant principals at three at each high school and a principal at each high school? What's a lead teacher doing that they can't do?
I think it's actually volume, and again, we've not put them in the budget for the reasons I've already described. And we've had this discussion in our central office for over a decade. There's a difference in volume between the lead teacher at a small elementary school and the lead teacher at a high school. We do compensate some in other areas, like the number of counselors or the number of clerical people, the number of assistant principals, and we have not added positions. You all may remember during the budget discussion last year, there was a request for a whole position from each school that would do some of the lead teacher duties, and I did not put that in, again, because I was trying to make sure the budget was very viable three or four years from now. So the legitimate part of their request is the volume is very different at a big high school as compared to a smaller middle school or elementary school.
Can I say something about that, Dr. Maltz?
I knew you would.
Yeah, and just having been the high school, the last day, the students leave as a lead teacher's last day too. So I know I'm on camera, but you know they work more than that. And so they're working, and they're in, there's no way you can leave that high school the last day and come the first teacher work day and do that job. So they are coming in, and they're just, they just do that out of the goodness of their heart. We've got great people. They are paid a supplement. Mr. Hahn said for the year, you know, like a $1,200 thing, supplement, the high school lead teacher, so I will advocate for that. It is, and them and the job they do, we've got good people. They go in all summer, they stay. I think everyone could vouch for that, so that job is never done, and I know money's tight, but I just want to say that they're definitely not sitting there with not a lot of work to do, absolutely not. So a lot of times they bring their kids with them and...
Yeah, I would say as the Scrooge watching the budget...
Yes, he is.
I do, I do think that if we do that, there might be other ways to get those funds. We have decreased the number of teachers as enrollment has gone down, okay? And so that may be one way to get that position, if we make sure that we're really allocating based upon the number of teachers in the building. I just hate to add it, you know? At this point, we will certainly add things, but I feel like it's, you know, my fiduciary responsibility to get us to that actualized budget that we started working on in the current year, and I think after we've done this three times or so, we'll be there. So I'm just trying to be efficient and effective, and it is a much bigger job than at a small elementary school. That is for sure the case.
And one, just one other thing, the summer, you know, you're right, Mr. Kirkpatrick, the principals are there, but when the lead teacher, your integral curriculum person, you know, is not being paid, and you want them to come in and plan with you because you knew them at that table, they're going to come. You know, but a lot of that planning goes on during the summer, and they come in all the time, but when you're trying to get everything ready, I mean, I know when I was at Pisgah, I couldn't have done that job without Charlie Immon there. So it is, it's tough to ask them to come in, and I'm like, do you mind coming in? Oh, I'll be there, you know, so it's just kind of that kind of thing. I'll shut up now.
Clarification, you said the lead teacher's last day is the students' last day? So they're not on the 215 schedule like normal teachers are? They have to work the 215 days?
It's with the staff schedule, not the student's schedule.
Sorry.
It is with the staff.
The staff schedule.
Okay, so I was trying to say, they should still be there.
A day or two, depending on the...
A day or two.
All right, I just, I just...
I'm sorry, I, yeah, a day or two, but not, not during the summer afterwards. You know, we approve for counselors to have a couple of weeks.
I've been told so.
What, two years ago, counselors, and that helped tremendously under the high schools, because there's so much with grad requirements and getting those transcripts ready, and when school was out, same thing. The last staff day, they were leaving, and they were definitely having to come back and do that.
There have been some years, though, where, due to weather, the last student day was the last day.
Yes.
Sometimes, that might have been what it was.
Okay.
So you, on this personal request, I mean, personnel request, you're still thinking it's over, or is this what you're going to present to us that you're wanting?
I do not at this time plan to add any of those requests.
Okay.
Again, if we get down to July and August, and we've spent a lot less fund balance than I think, then we'll come back and tell you that, woo, we just spent this much. And then I think we revisit the list.
Okay.
But at this time, I don't feel comfortable putting those in.
Plus, it wouldn't affect this year anyway.
That's correct.
We're talking about next year.
That's correct.
We've got a long time to be able to adjust if we need to.
That's right.
And we'd know what our enrollment would be. We can make a real good decision, maybe November, December, when we know what our fund spending was.
That's right.
What our enrollment is, and we might know what our financial position would be, and then this board could act to get them employed during that summertime. Superintendent working on the details today.
This could be a long night, so if you guys are okay, we'll go capital on you.
That's good. Let's go.
Well, he made that sound, it almost sounded like go postal, but no, go capital. Okay, all right, we're going capital. So you should have a sheet that looks like this in your folder, and it's got an itemized I won't bore you to tears, I'll hit these quick, and if you have questions, let me know. You'll see that this capital budget looks much like it has in last year. We have a lot of critical systems that are aging out, that being HVAC, telephone systems, hot water heaters, boilers, so forth and so on. But this week, these replacements will give us a chance to make some real headway down the road. I'll start with item number one there, Bethel Elementary parking lot lights. We are doing a changeover to LED. Everybody knows how long those last and how much more energy efficient they are. Bethel Elementary cafeteria stairs and library lights, there's some broken ones there. Or, sir?
Are some of this, I like those lights, are they going to be done in-house, or are we contracting out, or?
These changeovers, we're doing the work. This is for the materials.
Okay.
What schools? We've about got most of them done now, don't we?
We've made a pretty good dent in it, but we're probably, that's a really good question, we're probably at about 50%. We're trying to...
Have the schools, yeah.
But I'll tell you, just like taking this room, for example, when one of these bulbs goes out, we have, we do two orders a year at $17,000 a year, and have LED lights that can go in a incandescent fixture. And when they go out, that's what we replace with, so we're doing it over time as they fail, if that makes sense.
And they do fail? The bulb goes out, the bulbs won't burn?
That's right, that's right. And then you see Bethel Middle and Waynesville Middle dining room AC, it's at end of life. Canton Middle cafeteria water heater, it's a 500 gallon water heater, it's failed, the boiler inspection, we have to replace that. Clyde Elementary, the access road, $90,000. We're going to try to do a good portion of that work ourselves, and it might come in cheaper. Jonathan Valley cafeteria water heater, it's also failed boiler inspection. You see all these things failing. Maintenance equipment, we're only spending $60,000 on that this year, 59.6. This equipment will help us be a little more efficient and timely. So, and some of it has just, in fact, failed, like the forklift, it's, the parts for replacement are about $3,000. We've been able to procure one brand new for $11,000. So there's an $8,000 difference, but, you know, $3,000 in repairs, you're just about halfway there. So Metta Brook, we continue to have water issues out there. We did a big repair out there last year. We're going to do the upper end of the creek repair this year, and that project should be closed out. The chiller at Metta Brook is at the end of life. The Pisgah High School softball field light, that was something we were working on in this year. that was something we were working on in this year's budget and it's just so tight this year that we wanted to make sure we had it and honored our commitment to the town of Kent to make sure we get lights on there. So, it's in this year's budget. We do feel like in the way of donations and other things, we're probably gonna come in a good deal under that, a good amount under that. So, but that provides a little bit of a cushion as well. Pisgah High Dining Room AC, the HVAC is at end of life there. Pisgah High, we're buying them a gym dryer. I know the Pisgah Tuscola thing, it's a real, it's a real live, living thing. And so, we researched to make sure we'd in fact purchased one for Tuscola and we had.
About two years ago.
Right, that's correct. And Pisgah's has failed and so, we're gonna buy them one.
Which one's better? It's just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll show you the.
No, 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 no. Sorry.
Pisgah's will be a newer model.
I'm sorry.
You should have brought that up.
Can we take the one at Tuscola and get Pisgah and then Tuscola get the new one then?
All right. I'm bad. I'm sorry.
I don't think so.
Okay. I have a.
Show you your experience, guys.
Oh. Oh.
Go ahead. It's getting worse, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I shall carry on. Pisgah and Tuscola both are, they both have lots that really need repaving, they're bad. However, we could have consumed half this budget in those projects. And so, what we're gonna do is limp it along, make sure it's safe to travel along and patch some potholes and whatever until we can find our way in the budget. But really, they could fair to be repaved right now. So, but we will get them patched up. Various schools, the awnings are in need of repair. We have several, North Canton in particular, to give you a sight. Whoever, whenever replaced those and improved those, the edge of the awning actually causes the water to run down the supporting beams and uprights and they are rusting out, they are in really bad shape. And we're gonna sandblast those and there's a paint that's supposed to hold and cover rust. We're gonna try that and see how that works to try to avoid replacing. So, these are just repairs for awnings. Playground gravel, to bring those back up to safe play code. Various schools, we typically keep about eight barred units. That's the individual units in classrooms, we're gonna keep eight of those on hand so that we're not surprised by them, we're actually budgeting for them, which I thought was a good idea. Waynesville Middle, their D building roof, the balish roof has started leaking and it needs to be replaced. Waynesville Middle, C building chiller is at the end of life. And just so y'all know, when I say it's at end of life, we either can't get replacement parts or if we can, they're halfway toward the cost of a brand new one. It just does not make fiscal sense to try to continue to repair them. The Waynesville Middle A building gym heat, the existing boiler is oil fired. We'll be replacing that with natural gas. Here's some numbers for you, just so you'll know how these things help us. I get excited when I see that we're gonna be able to save some money and become more energy efficient. That old boiler burns 2.6 gallons of fuel an hour. It runs non-stop for about eight hours a day. We spent $14,000 in fuel to fire and keep that boiler going last year. The natural gas boiler that we're putting in is $15,000. So, you can see the savings that are forthcoming. Waynesville Middle, A building water heater, there's currently no hot water in A building. We, through mental health, mental health occupies the upper level of that, that being the academy and our academy teachers. And they have a higher code and hot water is required in the spaces they occupy and we do not have hot water. So, we're adding it, we failed inspection by default because mental health uses that building. So, we're coming up to code there. And then Waynesville Middle Parking Lot, again, this is temporary until money becomes available to repave that parking lot as well. And so, I think it's reasonable to anticipate. We're gonna try to take on a lot of these paving projects at one time because a lot of times you get a real discount because they've already got trucks and contractors in the vicinity and they'll give you a cut rate price if they're doing three or four projects at a time. So, we're just patching them and limping them along. And then the paragraph there, it's just basically pointing out in 2019 and 20, we requested 900,000 in capital, which was an increase from the prior year of 150,000. We intend to do the same thing. Request 900,000 total for critical replacement of these systems throughout our school system. Then if you flip over, and this is not capital, but I just, I pretty much put out there everything that I come in contact with so that you can see the total budget. On the back is a little chart that says, you can kind of see in the years where we went really, really lean and we were only provided 200,000 a year to operate on, now you know why. Much of the HVAC wasn't replaced, why the phone systems weren't replaced, the intercoms weren't replaced. And so, now the full bill is coming due. And then the only other thing is lottery. And I want to remind you that this base bid for replacing the turf, that's what lottery has been earmarked for. The preliminary estimate, this is not even a bid. This is best calculation on the part of the designer at around 1.5. Okay? Plus, the cost of the designer, which is 129.8, for a grand total of 1.7. I'm basically trying to show you there, we have funds available at 1.739. So, if we got the worst case scenario and we did all of the alternates and additions to replacing the turf and it came in as high as he estimated, we've got money to cover it. I would anticipate it coming in under that, but I'm also not a professional turf replacer, so. One other thing.
Not yet, you're not.
Not yet, I'm getting close, I'm learning a lot. And if any of you want to see the early renderings on those, I've got them on my laptop. You can take a look at them, I didn't know if anybody'd be interested. And one thing I failed to point out, in all of those in the capital budget, those are actual quotes with 5% added. So, there's about a $45,000 cushion there. And then on the Pisgah Softball Lights, we feel like there's a cushion there. So, that gives us anywhere from 45 to 100,000, somewhere in that range for projects unexpected that we may have to do. I can tell you that the squirrel cage flew into the the heating strips at the old daycare on the Virginia Avenue or Old Hazelwood School property. And they're back-to-back units priced at 65,000 apiece. So, we may need them sooner than later. Any questions on capital budget or lottery?
Well, that brought a sauce on the crab. That's serious, man.
Ms. Francis, would you take it away on child nutrition budget?
Very good.
We have to. On the backside of the budget, there is just some information, informational summary. The school nutrition fund, the budget for next year is $4,189,514. This is a decrease of $7,501 compared to this current year's budget. 58% of that is labor and benefits. 38% of that is food and 4% of that is overhead costs. I do not plan to do a meal price increase this year. Again, they're not requiring that and I think as long as we're holding our own, I'd like to not do that. And I think we're doing pretty good right now. We have four schools that are participating in the community eligibility program. And those are North Canton, Central Haywood High, Hazelwood and Clyde Elementary School. I apologize for putting CES, that's a hard habit to break. But CES listed on here is Clyde. North Canton and Clyde are up for, this is the end of their four-year term in that program and we have to re-qualify them. April 1st, we'll pull that data and we'll see if they can continue or not. This has been a great program for us. It has helped us, helped our revenue greatly, helped the students. And we have a lot of kids participating and eating there. And I hope that we are able to continue at those two schools and maybe add some additional ones. Hazelwood and Central Haywood are in year two of a possible four years, so they have two more years before we have to look at them again. But I hope that we can continue with that there because it's been great for our school system and our kids. There are a few items that I want to point out that may look like a drastic difference. Line five, which is our substitutes. We have moved a lot of that fund down to a contracted services, which is line 18, because we have started using Kelly Services for substitutes. We still have a handful of subs that were already employees with us that are still our employees and then anyone new that has come on has gone through Kelly Services. And so far, that has worked very well for us. We've had a pretty good fill rate from them and they are continuously adding more staff. So, it's been very helpful for our staff.
I know this is budget meeting, but is that working for custodians as well? That program, is it? Like I said, I know this is budget time, but I was thinking about that.
Yes, they are just now gaining the capacity to provide custodians. We did it the first time last week here at Central Haywood. They sent two different people that week while one of our custodians was out.
Tell them about the corrective action they took.
Yeah, they sent one Monday morning and she called in sick and you know, we let them know that she hadn't come and they had somebody here by 8:30. So, they called one in Silva on another job and sent them to us. So, they fixed it within about 30 minutes. So, they did really well on that.
Overall, it's working really good, especially for y'all.
Yes, it's been very helpful.
Yeah, that's the first time we've used it for custodians, that was last week, so.
We started mid-January for child nutrition and it's been great.
So, thank y'all for authorizing the use of Kelly Services because that has helped us a ton.
Good.
Line eight, managers, there is a $21,000 increase to that budget line. Part of that is the possible 2% raise plus the $15,000 that they could possibly earn in managers incentive pay, that's 1,000 per school if they earn it. So, that was added this year to the budget that was approved over the summer. Retirement is down 10,000, we over-budgeted last year. The workman, the medical insurance is up 6,000 because that's based on the projected state increase. Workman's comp is 10,000 lower because we have over-budgeted in the past, we've tried to correct that. Overtime, our managers went from being salaried to hourly. So, while they can earn comp time, I fear because of the lack of workdays that are gonna be available at the end of the year, that they really won't have time to take that time off and we may end up having to pay some of those folks out. I just want to have that money available in case that does happen. And again, line 18 is the new line for the Kelly Services, for the contracted services. Telephone lines, I'm sorry, unemployment insurance, we have not paid that in years, so we are trying to take that out of the line, so there's a $20,000 decrease there. Telephones, the new system is gonna save us $2,100. The line 25, membership dues and fees has increased by $1,200 as part of that managers incentive program and a way to help my staff with some more continuing education. I have paid for a membership for each cafeteria manager to be part of the School Nutrition Association. Line 28, computer software and supplies. Our software company is changing to a window or web-based version this year and that's gonna cost us $16,000 to upgrade to that program. Our food purchases are lower, were lower this year, so I have decreased that line by $25,000. And a lot of that goes back to USDA, had a lot of trade mitigation foods that they sent to us. We had, the first two months of school, we had free fresh apples and oranges sent to us that we didn't have to order ourselves, those were free to our program. And we've had some chicken and some other products that are, were free in addition to what we normally get through USDA. So, that was a help to our food purchases. And I don't think we're having fresh produce next year that I know of, but there are some other items that they will be sending to us. I think corn is one of the, and kids, we eat lots of corn in Haywood County, so corn is one of the items that will be free next year. Under the revenues, USDA grants, we have an increase of $81,000 in USDA regular, in the grants that we get for reimbursable meals. That CEP program that we're participating in, we've seen an increase in our participation, so that's where that's coming from. Commodity food used line is down 15,000 compared to last year because we're not gonna get quite as much of that trade mitigation money as we did this year. In line 47, you'll notice a big change of $63,200 less because that revenue was moved to our supplemental sales code in line 48. And even though that doesn't, we went from 63,000, that line's only showing a difference of 14,000 because we over-budgeted for that supplemental sales. We didn't make as much as we anticipated this year. Catered lunches, we have less students attending the daycare that we're feeding at the Haywood Community College. And our state reimbursement for breakfast is less because we have fewer students in the reduced category because they've moved to that some community eligibility program. So, it's kind of a shift in just different categories of whether they're free or reduced or paid students. But overall, I have, I believe we'll be able to balance the budget and not have to use any fund balance.
Pretty good.
Is there any questions I can answer for anybody?
If I have any questions.
What's the interest earned on investments?
Just the interest that's sitting with our money that's sitting in the bank, our capital.
Okay, interest on them, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
One more item for, oops. One more item for open session. You all, I'm sure, remember when we went over the things that we're required to report to the board. One of those is approved research done in our schools. You have a sheet on Western Carolina University Graduate School and Research. This is very minimally invasive. Uh, this is uh, very minimally invasive. Uh, essentially, this is a study that Western uh, requested to do on the student teachers that are serving in our school system and it deals with their um, change in ability to teach writing over time. So literally what they'll do is with their student teachers, they'll, they'll do a pre-assessment in their ability to teach writing. They'll give them some coursework and guidance and instruction and then they'll assess them again later in student teaching to see if that has impacted the student teachers' uh, or interns' ability to do writing. Really does not impact us very much.
And that's all of it. I'm gonna get some clarification from our attorney. I know normally we come back out of closed session and adjourn the meeting. Can we not just adjourn it from closed session so the camera folks can go home and everybody else can go home?
I think you have to come out of closed session, but doesn't necessarily mean the camera folks have to be here. This is always reflected in the official minutes.
Okay, I just hate for folks to be sitting back there for an hour, hour and a half or whatever it is and, and then just come out for five minutes, we say, meeting adjourned. You can go home. This time, board, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session. Ms. Barrett's made the motion, said, well, Mr. Kirkpatrick, any question or discussion on the motion? If there being none, we'll vote all's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries and answers. We'll be in closed session soon, we take about a five-minute stretch your leg break.